All right, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board meeting. If you can all rise and say the pledge. It's behind you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so thank you. And for anybody watching at home, we're in the theater tonight because there's PSAT testing in the library. So GTV was having some issues trying to get us up and running. So board members, just raise your hand so that I can see them and we'll get through tonight. All right, so we're going to start with correspondence. Brian?
So this evening, a couple of things for the board's consideration. I wanted to again thank Mr. Talbot for the memo that he put forth to the planning board. That's included. The second piece is an amendment to House Bill 267. The board will recall that we worked with Representative Alexander to work on a revised bill to allow criminal record checks with a more frequent basis. That draft legislation is in the folder for your review. That'll be considered by the House Education Committee. And the last one, this is a little bit of good news, which I know is a little premature, but I wanted to include this incredible photo. The high school store has gone through a pretty significant revamp this year. And I'll just share, so you can see the entirety of this, but last year, the school store brought in a total sales for the year, for the year, of $935. And this year, in its first opening week, their sales topped 1,000. So in one week, they managed to earn more money than they had the entire year before. So some remarkable work by Mr. Smith and the students. And I would also like to recognize Assistant Business Administrator Laura Taylor, who has worked with them from some of the accounting pieces. So that's the correspondence folder.
Nice, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, good news. Commendations. Go ahead, Lil.
So last week was homecoming week. It was super successful. I'm very grateful to my committee who helped me. The assembly was just so fun, as it always is. And the dance went really well. Thank you to Mrs. DeRoscher for DJing. It was just great. Next on Student Council's agenda is our Veterans Day breakfast, which is always super exciting. I'm also the chair of that committee, and I'm very excited to get started on that.
Awesome, thank you. Go ahead, Wendy.
Like, I got two of them yourself.
From Maple Avenue, grade three and four Student Council classroom elections were held last week. Maple Avenue's student leaders will have their first Student Council meeting this coming week. Also at Maple, their fourth graders will be traveling to the Mount Kearsage Indian Museum in Warner, New Hampshire as part of their social studies curriculum, and that is happening next week. Over at Glen Lake, back on September 28th, they hosted a very well-attended open house night, during which their students actually brought their families on a tour of their classroom and the school. And on Tuesday, October 10th, also at Glen Lake, they welcomed the Goffstown Fire Department to come and talk to students about fire safety. They got to see firefighters with their gear, tore a fire truck and an ambulance. And Glen Lake is really just thankful for Goffstown Fire Department for coming in and doing that safety series with the students. Over at Bartlett this semester, they have 20 St. Hanselms College students who are volunteering that come in two hours a week. They eat lunch with the students in the cafeteria, they facilitate play with the students at recess, and work with students in class. Mrs. Gogan also went to St. Hanselms College back in mid-September, and she helped run the orientation for all of the St. A's volunteers. Also, the Fall Cherrydale PTA fundraiser at Bartlett was successful, with sales over $5,000, and 22% of their students participating. The PTA built excitement for their Popcorn Fridays by giving free popcorn to all students and staff back in mid-September. They pop and sell popcorn every Friday for 50 cents. Also at Bartlett, they had 75% of their students and families attend open house on the evening of October, of September 28th. Families visited the classrooms, visited Title I information booths, signed up for Schoology if they weren't already signed up, and enjoyed an old-fashioned make-your-own-ice cream sundae. Over at Mountain View this past weekend, Mike Leonard, the Family and Consumer Science teacher, took second place at the Pumpkin Regatta. He looked fantastic. He was Gomez from the Adams family. Several of the students from Mountain View were also featured at the art show over at the Pumpkin Regatta, and we are very thankful that they were able to put their art on display. And Mountain View would also like to give a huge thanks to their kitchen team. They have been very creative in some of their donut art that they have been making for students to attract them to breakfast in the morning. So they're really thankful for that.
Awesome, thank you, Wendy. Go ahead, Lil.
One more thing, totally forgot, then I looked at Mr. DeRoscher. This Thursday is the GHS Music Department's first concert of the year. And also, just a reminder, November 2nd and 3rd is Clue. And that will be held, both of those will be held here.
Awesome.
Are tickets still available for this Thursday, Mr. D?
It's free of admission charge. The concert and Clue are actually open for the public, so all the seats are...
Okay, so no, okay.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else down there? Commendations, good news. Go ahead, Ginny.
I would just like to thank GTV16 for all that they do. They do an excellent job, not only with just our meetings, but with the soccer game that I saw the other day and all kinds of things. Especially because I had to miss two really important meetings because of a family situation. And I did hear a lady in public comments say, gee, I wish Mrs. McKinnon was here, because she always says, I wish we had more public comment, and here I am, and she's not here. Just to let them know that it's really nice GTV tapes all of these, because if we do have to be out for any reason, and I don't miss too many, it's my husband's birthday tonight, and I'm here. And it's nice, because you are able to sit and listen to the entire meeting and be completely up to date when you come back to the next meeting. So it's important stuff, and thanks.
Thank you, Ginny. Anyone else? Go ahead, Ellen.
Yes, there must be a huge amount of school spirit here at GHS. I live on the other side of the lake, on the back road, and apparently there was some kind of big game going on here, because we could hear every hoop and holler all the way over on the other side of the lake. It was wonderful.
Yes.
So there must be a lot of spirit here.
Definitely. Anyone else down there? Go ahead, Caroline.
I just wanted to say the Glen Lake Family Night was very well done. The teachers are really enthusiastic, very energetic, and it's a long day for them. It doesn't start till 5:30. It's really important for the families, and the kids are really excited. So I appreciate them. It was well done. I went last year as well, it was also well done then. So I appreciate it, and I know a lot of people do.
Thank you, Caroline. Anyone else? All right, see you none, we'll move on. We have public comment tonight. I have three names on the list. So when I call your name, come to the microphone, say hi, say your name and address clearly for the record. As you know, we ask you to keep it to three minutes or less. Caroline will raise a one-minute sign, letting you know to respectfully finish up. As you know, this is not a question-and-answer dialogue. We do not take complaints towards any school personnel, that includes staff, superintendent, administrators, or school board members. So with that, I will have Kirsty Hazelbaker come up to the microphone.
Hi.
Hello, welcome. You know, it's very loud.
Kirsty Hazelbaker, 23, Timeway, in Goffstown. I am here to read a letter. I also have 115 signatures on the letter that I got in the past 24 hours from people in the community. I have two copies of the letter to send to give to Caroline and Heather, and then I will send the rest electronically, because it is an electronic petition.
Okay, is this towards a board member?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I'll just take it, and then, because we're not listening to any complaints towards board members that is against our policy.
It's not really a complaint, it's more about, like, my safety and my place on this board.
I would very much like to read it.
Okay, I'll start to listen, but if I feel that you're borderline, then I'll ask you to stop. So go ahead.
I am here to request that the Goffstown School Board censure this board member for illegal actions regarding 91A right-to-know and FERPA violations. These violations include sharing board emails and a minor's personal information with his wife, and the subsequent online harassment this has caused. After our attorney submitted a letter to the member and the board detailing these legal infractions, board member offered a quick apology, but no further punitive action was taken. As a longtime board member, he has obviously shared public information before, as he indicated on 9/11, that he believes all correspondence to any board member is public information. This is not true. As someone who has spent 29 years working with the state and claims to be very familiar with this law, he is mistaken. I would like to be very clear to all of you that what he did was illegal. Board member shared a minor's student's information with his wife. Are you aware, as you are aware, this violates FERPA, and as a school board member, he should know that student privacy is of the utmost importance. This has led to online harassment and targeting on social media by his wife. She has yet to stop her verbal attacks, most recently questioning my 17-year-old status of as a minor, who would be permitted to choose to cut off her body parts, and that she will continue to deal with her in public. I will edit that the last post was actually about an hour and a half ago, that mentioned me by name, and that she was offended by Lily's attitude. Board member did not use sound judgment to protect a student, and he violated not only these illegal issues, but the code of ethics of the board. What he did is reprehensible, and I do not feel the board has taken appropriate action to reprimand him. I call for you to censure this board member, suggest he receive training on proper municipal boardmanship, and to New Hampshire laws surrounding the same. Let's teach our kids and our community that laws and ethics matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kirsty. Thank you so much. I'll give this to Brian. Yep. All right, so we have Megan Boyd.
Hi. Megan Boyd, 2 Reed Street. So thank you to Mr. Belkey, school board members, for the opportunity to speak. This is in reference to a couple weeks ago. I watched both sessions of the recent Joint School Board and Budget Committee meetings, which was great. It provided a small but invaluable glimpse into the complex process of formulating an appropriate budget for Goffstown schools. Balancing the tightrope of taxpayer concerns with ensuring adequate financial investment for local education clearly presents a formidable challenge, one that I don't envy, and I commend you all for, very much so. My purpose in speaking tonight is to both recognize this difficulty, but also to urge you in the strongest possible terms to continue showing support to our teachers, administrators, and staff through adequate financial investment. The system of public funding, public education funding in New Hampshire is at best challenging and at worst entirely broken. I recognize that our school district gets a fraction of what it ought to from the state, putting the financial burden of supporting the complex needs of our schools on the shoulders of local taxpayers. We all know the taxes are going up, while the cost of living is also rising. I'm sure all of us are feeling this increased financial pressure, and of course, do not want to feel the pain even more. However, recent bipartisan research at the state level tells us that in the midst of the current teacher shortages, one of the top reasons teachers are leaving is inadequate pay. Further, 100% of paraeducators recently surveyed in New Hampshire reported that low salary was the top reason for leaving their jobs. The authors of this bipartisan report, among other recommendations, suggested that competitive pay and increased financial investment to teachers should be a top priority. On behalf of myself and my family, please continue to advocate for our children and their futures by being unafraid to adequately invest in our schools. We will surely feel the pinch come tax time, but providing our schools and teachers and maintaining the excellent public education Goffstown is known for with the support they need will be worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. All right, and the last one is Laura Adams. Hi, Laura.
Laura Adams, 110 Patty Hill, in Goffstown. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration on the many matters that come your way. I know that there are policies and procedures are in place for concerns about books available in our schools, especially at Mountain View Middle, where there's a wide variety of maturity levels. That makes it an easy age group to go after. However, just coming to a school board meeting and stating that the whole young adult section in the library should be removed is not the proper procedure. Young adult books are written for ages 12 and over. They cover all sorts of topics. I know that there are forms called Request of Reconsideration, Review Committees, and a common sense path that needs to be followed in making a decision to the appropriateness of these materials. So I hope the petitioners are ready to read each book, fill out each form, and go to the review committees, because you can't eliminate a whole subset of books. Hopefully, these policies and procedures will be followed before we take away the first amendment rights of all the students to read and examine all aspects of the diverse world we live in. The other subject seems to be getting a lot of attention, is social-emotional learning. This has been a basic and uncontroversial part of education for a decade. It starts in the home and continues through the school day. It's called life skills, sort of like the poster that said, "All I ever really needed to know, I learned in kindergarten." Living a balanced life of work, play, and learning are the basics of SEL. Mastering social and emotional skills can subsequently improve chances for a lifetime of greater successes. Who would object to that? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that is all for the public comment tonight. So I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to move on with our agenda. And it's approving the October 4th, 2023, meeting minutes. Everybody have a chance to read them? Anybody see anything?
We'll move forward.
All right, so Ellen made the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Nicole. Any further discussion? Okay, see you none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
See.
Two abstentions, Denise, Shane, and Ginny. Financial report, Dan.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve a total manifest presented in the amount of $1,565,821.29.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second?
One second.
By Caroline. Go ahead, Dan.
And since we didn't have an A&amp;F report, I'm going to ask our business administrator, Mr. Scott Gross, to go through it.
Thank you. You should have received the summary in your packets of that manifest. Over $931,000 is for payroll, taxes, and benefits. We do have some special education AP activity totaling a little over $60,000, mostly for out-of-district placement costs, as well as special ed contracted services. For general expenses, I'll just point out some noteworthy ones. You have your SAU 19 October Assessment, a little over $181,000. Cengage Learning, this is a combination of curriculum purchased through a grant, as well as the media database that we talked about, I think at our budget meeting, where that is split cost between Mountain View and the high school. Connection Financial, a little over $57,000. That's for IT equipment, which is mostly laptop replacements. STA, Goffstown Truck Center, nearly $29,000 for athletics and co-curricular transportation, although the majority of that was athletics transportation. Verco, we do replace classrooms of furniture. This was two classrooms' worth of furniture, student desks and chairs, $20,000. Impact Fire, $19,350, and that is for a fire alarm, as well as sprinkler repairs. I think we mentioned that we did have a couple of different issues going on, which I'm going to talk about in about five minutes. One of them is we needed to replace the fire panel here at Goffstown High School, which you authorized to use the CRF. There were sensors that also need to be replaced. I'm going to cover that in a few minutes. But also, we had sprinkler pipe damage at Mountain View Middle School, which will be covered by insurance. So we have to pay it, and then our insurance company, Primex, reimburses us, less our $1,000 deductible. Home Depot Pro, $13,627 for custodial supplies and equipment. Eversource, a little over $13,000 for electricity. Amazon, $12,561, that's books. Equipment supplies a lot of schools purchased through Amazon. We have a preferred business account, which means we get these things the next day, more often than not. And lastly, Dead River Company propane at $92.87. Performance Food Service, we issued payments, a little over $13,000 for food and commodities. So that is the manifest summary for tonight.
Anybody have any questions for Scott? All right, see you none. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? We're unanimous. Go ahead, Scott.
All right, next on your agenda, I provided the board with a memo from both myself and IT Director Stephen Borget. This is in respect to the student laptop lease with Connections Financial. And as part of that lease, Connections Financial requires the board to authorize the business administrator to sign an obligor larger resolution, I don't know how you pronounce that. So we are getting 410, we are leasing 410 HP Pro books. The cost of that equipment is a little over $321,000, which will be financed over the three-year lease purchase term. The financing charges for that will be almost $30,000. The funding for the lease purchase of laptops is going to be part of our FY '24 budget, using the 442 account lines. You'll recall that when I presented the FY '25 budget, there is a bit of a shortfall, about $32,000. That's in that new spending line. That covers the difference. I included, in the memo, I included the payment schedule. And in order for me to sign this agreement, and they want this agreement signed by Stephen tomorrow or Wednesday, that's when it expires, I would need the board to authorize me to pretty much sign what's called a non-appropriation clause language. So with that, I did prepare a recommended motion for the board to allow me to sign that document to proceed with the lease.
Ellen, you had your hand up.
Yep. May I make that motion?
Yeah, does anybody have any questions for Scott before?
Well, I'll have questions after the motion, but we'll do the motion personally.
Sure, Ellen, go ahead.
I move to accept the resolution of the financing of laptops through LEAF Capital Funding DBA Connection Financial Services that was presented by the business administrator. Furthermore, the board directs the business administrator and assistant business administrator to execute the contract and attest to the Goffstown School Board's adoption of the resolution presented.
Thanks, Ellen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Mr. Jared. So Scott, looking at this, you said lease purchase contract, so at the conclusion of the contract, are we going to own these laptops? Or are students going to be able to purchase them after they're done?
We own, these are student laptops that are primarily going to be in carts. So we own those?
Steve has his hand up.
Come up to the mic, Stephen.
So these are, these are the laptops that are in the mobile carts. 50 of them belong at Goffstown High School. 75 of them are at Mountain View. 40 of them are at Bartlett. The rest of them live at Maple Lab. So that's where these devices are living. They're replacing the seven-year-old MacBooks that are in service in these rooms.
You have another?
Oh, yeah. Let's just ask a bunch of questions, and Steve, stay right up there. So with these particular HP Pro books, are we going to have to also increase any licensing or recycle any of the licensing we have, since we're getting rid of the Apple quote-unquote computers?
When we did our Microsoft 365 subscription over the summer, the entitlement for student licensing is 40 students per staff license. We purchased 650 staff licenses. You can do the math of how many kids that we get.
Okay. And then, this one's more of a finance question, so I don't think you'll have to answer this one. So you said that this is going to be listed under new, so if for some reason we get a default budget next year, we're going to have to return these laptops?
No. It means that we would find other means of, it would be a budget transfer, it would be finding money within our budget to pay for that, if for some reason, and again, I want both the board and the public to know that we have entered into lease purchase agreements for probably two decades with Apple and other entities. So this is not something that's new, but it's a technical thing whereby we agree to pay, and if we don't pay, then we would have to return the laptops. They then sell them, and then we would still be responsible for any quote-unquote "loss" that the provider incurred.
Are you all set, Jared?
A different question, if I may, Mr. Jared. Because I remember in our last meeting...
Dan, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I believe it's only the $32,000 that's not in the budget, not the actual total amount.
Yeah.
So it would only be the $32,000, to make it clear.
Yeah. My next question, I thought at our last meeting, we had provisioned some ESAR funds for laptops. Is this mutually exclusive from what we did?
Yes. The ones that we used ESAR for was to replace the 50 deep funk IMAX in the high school library. This is to replace the laptop carts, which were leased well before COVID.
Yeah. Just want to make sure that everybody knows we're trying to get a lot of laptops in here, and this is something different from what we already approved last meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Anyone else have any questions? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, we're unanimous. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. I wanted to let the board know that I did reach out to the Admin Finance Committee, as well as our Budget Committee rep, to let them know that today we received the news of an out-of-district residential placement for special education. That is, it is a very large cost, probably a cost of over $500,000. So with that, I will be discussing, when we go through the budget, to increase the out-of-district placement line by $400,000. This is a situation whereby the district has to incur the cost in year one, but we do not get reimbursement from the state for special ed aid until the next year. So we will have about a $200,000-ish extra cost in our current year's budget, of which we will not be getting any revenue from the state. Next year, we will have a $400,000 additional cost, but we should be getting about $175,000 in revenue from the state. And then the year after that is when we have the full cost of the out-of-district placement, and we get probably 80% or so of the cost back from the state. In the final year of this out-of-district placement, there's no cost, but yet we get our 80% reimbursement in that last year. So there is a pretty hefty first-year cost, when any school district in the state has to deal with an out-of-district placement, whether it be residential or non-residential, and recognize that the state gives us those monies the following year. So there's a tail to it. So with that, I will be, you know, looking through our budget to see where we can do budget transfers for the extra costs this year. I will need to be making corresponding changes to your revenues for next year's budget, as well as the budget itself. So there are multiple areas that are going to get impacted by, you know, the news that we got today. So I will share with you that I was at an association meeting this past Friday, and this is not uncommon. You know, we have, there are many school districts that have these large-type placements and/or who have a large number of out-of-district placements. It's just part of what we do as a school district and other school districts do all over the state. So if there's any, you know, anybody has any specific questions, we wouldn't be able to talk about it in a public session anyway, but if you do, just let the chair know, and we can go into...
So Brian wanted to say something.
Yeah, I was just going to share one thing. Mr. Gross, one of the things that all school districts deal with, the possibility of having one of these unbudgeted, unplanned placements. You can create a capital reserve fund exclusively for special education anticipated costs. We have not done that historically in Goffstown. I will share that New Boston has a capital reserve fund just for special education, so if they have an unexpected placement like this. Historically, we've always been able to kind of absorb the... Historically, we've always been able to kind of absorb those costs. This one is obviously a lot larger, but this would be something that probably not at this point in time, but for next year, we could think about the creation of a capital reserve fund for this very purpose. The one in New Boston, we have put money into and have never had to touch, which has been a good thing. But I just share that as another financial tool as we consider this, kind of the volatility of our special education lines.
Thank you, Brian. Go ahead, Jared, you had your hand up.
Thank you. Just keeping an eye on the calendar, Scott, when do you think you'd be able to have those amendments to the budget so that we can ratify our budget and pass it on to the Budget Committee?
I have amendments to it tonight.
You do? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Anyone else have any questions for Scott? Okay. All right, moving on, we have Superintendent's report.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I did have one that's not on the agenda, I just got an email on. And we can do it under any other business, or I can do it now, it's up to you.
Go ahead, do it now.
All right. So I mentioned before about the Goffstown High School fire panel, we replaced that using capital reserve funds. In doing that work, when they replaced the panel, they recognized that there are sensors that are in a lot of the ductwork that was malfunctioning, and those sensors needed to be replaced in order for the fire panel to work as it should. Unfortunately, because these sensors were not working properly, the fire panel would just constantly beep in the main office. So that work is underway, and it is going to be an additional $9,624 to replace the 20 to 25 sensors that is throughout the building. For refreshing everyone's memory, the board voted to use capital reserve funds to replace the panel itself in the amount of $47,209. And at this particular point, I would respectfully request that the school board authorize use of capital reserve funds in the amount of an additional $9,624 to complete the fire panel project.
Go ahead, Alan.
On which? That we appropriate this $9,624?
It was $9,624 from the capital reserve fund.
From the capital reserve fund to complete this project.
Thank you, Alan. Do I have a second?
What's up?
By Caroline, any further discussion? Go ahead, Dan.
I believe we had 250,000-ish. Fifty-plus in the, in the account for balance.
Yeah, so we're good, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Are you all set, Scott?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. All right, now Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So, good evening. On October 2nd, this board was presented with three complaints that were identified under policy KE. I disagree with the use of policy KE in this manner and would welcome a future agenda item to further discuss with the full board. However, in the meantime, I'm going to respond to each of the complaints individually. Number one, public complaint submitted by Nancy Beederman to remove the Trevor Project poster alleging a violation of RSA 18611 indicating that parents were not provided the required two weeks' notice before the teaching of human sexuality or sexual education. I disagree with this element of RSA 18611. I don't think it's relevant. Providing resources for support for our LGBTQ+ is not a violation of 18611. I will not be doing anything further on this complaint unless directed by the board to do so. Number two, public complaint submitted by concerned parents, grandparents, and residents of Goffstown regarding inappropriate bracelets sent to MVMS by a school board member. I will not be addressing this concern as it involves a student. Moreover, there do not appear to be any policy violations by a board member regarding this complaint. I will be doing nothing further with this complaint unless directed by the board to do so. Number three, public complaint by Gail Duke Low requesting a change in the policy of allowing young adult books to be available in the library at MVMS. While I disagree with the idea of disallowing young adult books being available at MVMS, there are a number of questions that I have regarding this inquiry. I will be issuing, issuing Mrs. Kohler a memo to look further at best practices for a middle school library and to evaluate if any changes are needed to our current model. It is worth noting that no concerns have been raised to the MVMS principal this year or in any previous years regarding this topic. I would appreciate, I would anticipate the appropriate channel for reviewing and responding to my memo would be through administrative channels and possibly a discussion at the Curriculum and Education Committee at this point in time. This will be my course of action regarding this complaint unless directed by the board to take any additional further action. Continuing on, while processing a right-to-know request recently, I discovered that a number of student surveys were done by teachers at Goffstown High School that included some non-academic questions. To ask these questions, parental permission is required. This did not happen, and I have received further follow-up on about a half a dozen surveys through a second right-to-know inquiry. Although these non-academic survey questions were very basic, they included things such as, do you have a job outside of school? It doesn't matter, the nature of the comment, that we should have had parental permission. I have notified the New Hampshire Education Department of this concern, and I plan on requiring the Goffstown High School faculty to receive additional professional development around this topic. I wanted the board to be aware.
I have one second. Jared, try to stand up.
I know that you're focusing on GHS for this one, but is this also going to be policy training or refresher at the middle school and all other schools?
So that is a conversation that Mrs. Kohler and I have had, that we think it would be probably appropriate to do that. We had already discussed some of these elements previously, but we are evaluating that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared.
Any other questions before I continue?
Oh, go ahead, Shane.
I have a quick one, Brian. So when we have something like this, where does this fall as far as, I know as a special education teacher, I used to give all my students a transition questionnaire, which was required by the state, but also ask questions like, do you have a job and things like that? So where's the line on what we need parental permission for and what we don't need parental permission for? Because, again, like a transition questionnaire is required for high school students in their IEPs as part of a state requirement, but then we're also required to give parental, like, we have to get parental permission. So it's, it's a little bit fuzzy, and I, I'm, like, for our teachers, I guess, where do they?
Yeah, and really, I want everyone to know that there were nothing, there was nothing inappropriate being asked by our teachers. There is a technical assistance memo that the Department of Ed issued in September of this year, giving guidance to school districts. They don't specifically address that question, Shane. I would agree with your assessment, that if there is a questionnaire that is a transition-type questionnaire that involves non-academic questions, even though it's required by the state, you would need to get parental permission to do that. So this is unfortunate, because at the start of the school year, teachers are trying to get to know their kids. So they're trying to connect with their kids, they're trying to learn about their kids, they're trying to understand who they are, and that was the scope of the intent that the teachers had. Again, we need to make sure that we're following the statute and we're following our own policy, so I apologize that we had a few of these that were incorrectly done, and we will take care of that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shane. Go ahead, Wendy.
I'd also mention, Shane, just for your question, is I am going to a conference on November 6th, which the New Hampshire Schools Administrator Association is running, and it's going to be specific on recent legislation, so your question I will bring to that training and you can get an answer on. So thank you for that.
Thank you, because I just think it's important for our teachers to kind of know, so we don't make mistakes as far as, it's part of my job to do this, but do I need the permission also? You know what I mean? So if you could find that out, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Thank you, Wendy.
Just a few more quick.
Oh, wait, hang on, sorry. Alan.
Just with the concern being expressed about books in our school, in our library, in any of those statements of concern, was there any specific book noted? No, just a general statement of school district, please be aware.
Yeah, and what I'm going to do with that is, I think it gives me, I ask a number of questions. I met with Mrs. Kohler, and we talked about what are best practices around middle school library selections, how are young adult books treated, should we consider any changes to our model? I'm not saying that I agree with the complaint, but I think it does give me pause to ask a few questions and to take a closer look at what we're doing and to evaluate our best practices. So we, but I do want to be clear, we have a lot going on. So what we will not be doing, what I will not be asking Mrs. Kohler to do, is drop everything that she's doing and pick this up and run with it. So this'll, this'll be something that will add to the work queue over the next several months, but I don't want to give anyone an illusion that we're going to drop everything and focus exclusively, you know, on this topic. We certainly will not be.
And can I ask on, it was B, bracelets or something being handed out at one of our schools? In general, are students allowed to just hand out generally anything without administrator or teacher approval?
So when we think about something like this, the most important thing to recognize, and remember, this is a middle school. So if somebody has, you know, a bracelet, like the medical bracelet that I have on my wrist, this little tiny piece of silicone, I could have a sack with a thousand of these things. We are not restricting people giving things out, we're not encouraging people to give things out, but what's important for the board to know is if something creates a disruption to the learning environment, it will be addressed. So that, and by the way, that was a Supreme Court decision, this is not something that I'm making up. So if and when something creates a disruption, we would address it. I will not be speaking any further about this particular complaint because this involved a student.
Okay, no, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Go ahead, Jenny.
Will your review of the library books also include a librarian for expertise?
Yeah, I would certainly, not only our, our own library media staff, I would think library media staff from our other buildings, but I'm also interested in what are other school districts doing? So I will ask Mrs. Kohler to take a look at some of the districts that we work really closely with. What is Bedford doing? What is Londonderry doing? What are some of our other partner school districts doing with respect to their library collection? And let us take a look. We may or may not change practices, but it is something that I think is worth a little further investigation.
Thank you. All right, thanks. Go ahead, Brian.
Okay, continuing, just a couple more, if I may. We were notified just today, so this was good news today from the New Hampshire Education Department, that there will be a new round of SAFE grants for safe, school safety projects. I did not get the number, but they're releasing the projects next week. The good news is Mr. Borget has them already ready already, and he is ready to go, and likely our projects will focus on surveillance, so we will likely be targeting camera replacements as well as some alert notification equipment for each of the schools. So we're excited about that, and we hope to have continued success as we have had in the past. And my last one, I'm even more excited about than the SAFE grant, which is, I wanted to let you know, and I let Lilly know this evening, that we are working with the New Hampshire School Boards Association again, and we're holding our first statewide student rep session on Saturday, December 2nd, from 9:00 to 12:00 in partnership with the School Boards Association. And at this point, we believe the session will be inconquered at the School Boards Association. So we'll put more information out, but this is going to be a continuation of the work that we did last spring, so we're excited to expand the umbrella a little bigger and have a larger catchment that hopefully will have students from across the state. So we're excited for that, and I, I'm glad that that day happens to be open for Lil, I think, so I'll look forward to being with her that day. And, yeah, we're excited about that. And I'm happy to stop there and ask if there are any questions.
Go ahead, Nicole.
I am wondering about the SAFE grants and if there might be any room left over by building to consider the parents' request for the night lock situation. So don't need an answer this evening, but I think those grants are done by building, correct?
Yeah, they're, they're done by building, and the last round of them had a $100,000 cap per building. I do know for the camera project that Mr. Borget is considering for our larger buildings, there will not be enough money available to have any leftover. In fact, in order to replace all the cameras at Goffstown High School, we likely need another 30-plus thousand dollars. Probably a similar story for Mountain View, but certainly the other schools might have some ability to accept a few other projects. So that is something we could talk about further.
Yeah, that would be great. I did notice in the last round that you maxed them out at the high school, which makes sense. But I noticed that some of the other schools didn't max them out, so if there's an opportunity to do that, that would be great.
Duly noted, Mr. Borget.
It's noted, but the other part tenor said the SAFE grant is the state has very specific silos that they will fund, so it has to fall into one of the prefab categories, which generally are surveillance, notification.
And access control. So arguably, Stephen, it would fall within the access control. I think that that particular project would fit within that, but we're happy to take a look at that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, so you're all set?
I am, thank you.
All right, moving on to GHS trip requests. We have a couple of them.
We have Mr. Gerocia with us this evening, so we will invite him up to the microphone, and I'll ask him to speak a little more specifically about what we have this evening. These are two very cool trips, and I'll let Mr. D have the thunder.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to speak for you tonight. I'll take, I don't come to very many school board meetings, so I'll take a moment and share that I just completed my 20th year here at Goffstown, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Here's to another 20, Joe.
I've got a brand-new space to play.
You've got a great banner now.
All right, so I hope you'd agree with me, we have a long tradition of excellent student performances here in our SA-19 communities, and we also have a long tradition dating back to my, my former colleague, W. Kurnan. We've been taking students out of Goffstown to both perform and to see performances for a long time. It's been some of the best experiences we've been able to give to students, some opportunities for them to strive for and to learn a ton more than we could possibly teach them here. So some of our mountaintop experiences, if you will, in that part of our program were when, with this board's blessing and approval, we took field trips to Germany and Austria in 2008, 2012, 2016, and that pattern was a bit disrupted. 2016 plus four is 2020. So with a lot of thanks to Mr. Gross and the business office, we navigated through refunding an awful lot of money, and that pattern has been disrupted, and we believe it's time to bring it back. So what we're asking is for you to approve a field trip request that we're planning really far ahead. So we're looking at the spring of 2025, and we've done that every time that we've undertaken a trip this large to give our families and our communities time to make it as affordable as possible. The dates at this time are pending the approval of next year's academic calendar, and from a business perspective, we're not asking the board to approve any funds. There are no district funds that are attached to this project. Contracts are actually between the travelers and the tour company specifically. We're asking for your approval for staff members to attend this field trip and supervise kids. Yeah, and with your permission, I can talk about the next one at the same time and then see if there are questions?
Sure. Go ahead.
Because they're connected. So typically, we would not be proposing two giant trips at the same time, but since our, our fantastic class of 2024 students did not have an opportunity. So our, our community really, I think, after 2008, 2012, 2016, began to expect that this would reoccur, and our current seniors have not had an opportunity to do this. So at the same time as we want to talk with people about a big opportunity next year, we want to throw something out there for our seniors and perhaps their families to be excited about as well. So we're also looking for your permission to plan a trip to New York City this April, and I, and I think you have the paperwork that goes with these two opportunities in your packets. I'd like to amend the, at the time that we sent this over, we were still negotiating for dates, and today, after speaking with GHS administration, we believe April 17 and 18 are clear for GHS and also clear for the tour company. So, so both of these itineraries really are, they're trips that we've taken before, and we've, we've gone through, we've had some problem solving. We've been able to improve the experiences and plan a little bit ahead for some things that might occur. We're using a travel company that we've worked with, worked with in the past, so we feel that these are great opportunities, and I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Go ahead, Alan.
Lodging in New Jersey?
Say that one more time.
You're lodging in New Jersey?
For the, for the New York City trip, yes. It's a little bit more affordable.
Yes.
It's a lot more affordable. A lot more affordable, and after, after 20 years of teaching, I really love the idea that kids know they can't just take an elevator ride to Times Square.
There you go. It's another way you can get there.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Shane.
Thank you. For the Germany-Ostria trip, that's what it was, right? Germany-Ostria?
Thank you. For the Germany-Austria trip, that's what it was, right? Germany-Austria? Would your plan be to do it in 2029 as well? Would you want to be back on the four-year cycle?
There are often parents who ask that question. And so what I always say is we plan one trip at a time. But yeah.
Would that be your goal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Shane. Anyone else? Go ahead, Nicole.
These look awesome. I'm a little jealous. And are there going to be any opportunities, especially for the Europe trip, to be fundraising for the students?
Absolutely. So, so once we have a sense of what students, how many students and their families are interested, and we'd be happy to talk to you about chaperoning if you have any interest.
Yeah.
But certainly, we'll, we'll talk about what, what that need is, and we try to be realistic with students. They are expensive trips. It would be, it would be a pretty far reach to say you could fundraise the whole thing, but certainly, we could come up with some opportunities along the way to help with that. So once we have a sense of who is looking for that help, then we can plan those things out.
Very good. Thanks.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, so I'd just like to thank Mr. Derocher and the team for bringing these innovative programs. I'm a big believer in travel. This is an incredible opportunity for these students. I do recognize that these, these are expensive trips. Everything has gotten so expensive in a post-COVID world, but I'd like to thank Mr. D and the team for bringing these requests forward, and I offer my full support.
Go ahead, Alan.
Just as one board member, I did have the opportunity to go to two or three high school trips to Europe a number of years ago. When I was on the board, I said, can I go? Do you need a volunteer? It is a wonderful experience, number one, but the kids, the kids get so much out of that type of travel because you actually see different cultures and, and experience those cultures. And as much as there's so much similarities, there are also very many differences. And it's a great travel experience, and I'm glad you're doing this one. I would hope other departments maybe would look into it, too. I, I know I would encourage it. I see the value for all our kids if they can go on these to go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Is there any other questions, comments? If not, we can entertain a motion for both together.
Move to approve the requests, Meltr.
All right, so that's a motion by Ellen. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Jenny. Any further discussion? Okay, see none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, or unanimous. Have a great time.
Bring them all back, Mr. D. My only ask.
He will.
So we have one more field trip request. This is an out-of-state request going to the Songas Industrial History Museum in Lowell, Massachusetts. The board will recall, I think this might be our third year that we've done this trip, that feels right. So this would be all of our freshmen. Thank you. That will be going on December 11, 13, 15, 18, and 20. So there's about 274 students. It will take about 60 per day. So we would be asking for your approval to take this trip to Lowell, Massachusetts, please, for our world history classes.
Move to approve the field trip?
I have a motion by Ellen. Do I have a second? By Jenny. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, or unanimous.
Okay.
All right, so now I hope everybody brought their budget packets. We're going to start going line by line on budget. You can go home, Lil. You don't need to stay.
Although you're welcome to stay.
Oh, yes. Very interesting.
Mr. Gross, which, which packet would you like us to use? With notes or without notes?
I think it's better to use the one with notes because if there are questions here, the notes may explain or provide an answer.
Thank you, Lil, for coming. And you don't have to, if you're more than one, you're always welcome.
With note. But doesn't...
Okay, so Scott, the packet that has the date of 9/29 in the bottom-left corner, that's the proper packet to be using?
Yes.
Mine was, I have 10/4.
You're looking for the thick one that says...
It may have just been printed, and that's why she has one.
Is it budget with notes?
This is for you.
You should say budget with notes.
Not, not the Goffstown school board.
You're looking for a thick one like this, Ellen. Thick.
You want the Goffstown school board.
Which, we have two, which one, Brian?
The one with notes.
The one with notes. So it's FY25, proposed budget with notes that we were given.
Okay.
There, I have it.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so for any board members that are new to this process, I will start with page one. If anybody has any questions on that page, we raise our hands, and then we just go page by page by page.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Would the board want Mr. Gross to just highlight some of the new spending or any of the kind of highlights on the page, or just go with any questions and just keep moving?
Let's go slow.
Go slow.
I think highlights would be great personally on that page. Yeah.
So if I may, I wanted to start off by, on, on two things. One, I provided you with this sheet of paper, and historically, the board has asked, you know, what positions may have been requested, what's included in the budget, what's not included in the budget. And this is an overview, this particular sheet is an overview of that. So as we mentioned when we did the budget presentation, the notion of the situation at Maple Avenue and having to potentially move sections of students from Maple to Mountain View was not in this budget. We talked about if we had to do that, that it would come from our 5% fund, contingency fund. That being said, there are things that are, that are in this budget, like lunch monitors, et cetera. So in that top column there, of, set of, you'll see in blue, those positions are not included in the budget, but the ones above them are. In the middle section are ones that were requested but were not included in the budget. And that, again, I think that was discussed in these individual presentations, but to give you an example, there was a request for a special education teacher at, say, Glen Lake School and an interventionist to make it full-time, and those were not included in the budget. There was also a request at Bartlett for an interventionist. That was not included. So, and then there were some custodial positions. But what we did talk about was repurposing positions that we believe will exist through to either attrition or repurposing, and those are at the bottom. Those were IT help desk technicians, some modest changes in the administrative assistant time here at the high school, co-curriculars, repurposing a HVAC person in facilities to a grounds person, and then also this technology integration specialist. So the FTE count will remain the same, but there will be new positions. And again, that is something that we have to decide on as we go into next year FY25, more so than right now, because we have to see how things kind of line up. So, but that's what, that's where we are. And I know that, I'm sorry, Jenny, you had a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Jenny.
Yeah. I'm kind of concerned about the number of times that we've repurposed GHS teachers. Are we adequately, have, are we adequately giving what we need to hear? Are the courses changing that much? I don't see it. And I'm concerned that, it seems like every year, we were repurposing teachers here to go somewhere else and do something. And it just concerns me.
Yeah.
Because over the years, it seems like it keeps happening, and I'm just hoping that we're staffing here correctly.
Yeah, I, I think what we look at specifically is the student counts in the classes themselves, recognizing that, and I think the superintendent has alluded to this, you know, there's something to be said about when you have, you know, 26 kids in a third-grade classroom and you have 15 kids in a high school social studies class. So we look across the board at all of our different sections, and we look to see, are there ways to, you know, repurpose positions by not eliminating courses, but by just managing the class, the course load in these particular classes? And over the last couple of years, we saw that there were opportunities in certain classes or disciplines where we could group more kids and increase the class size at the high school from where it was for those particular classes. So I would also say that the student population at Goffstown High School, over the years, it used to be in the high, like 1180, et cetera. It went down to 10, I mean, there was a point last year where we were like just hovering right above 1,000. So that is the reason. So I think the board should recognize the fact that we have to, for lack of a better word, flex our staffing, meaning that we saw big-time increases at the elementary school level, and we saw decreases in enrollments at the high school level. So that's the, that's the natural progression. It may, it could may, seeing how this, if this is a genuine bubble, that bubble may mean that we might move the resources back in eight years, back here. But that all remains to be seen. But it was really more class size and just the general population of the high school going from the 1150 range to, you know, 1050, 1060.
It, I think one thing that comes to my mind is, we worked really hard over the years to have electives for kids because we didn't used to have them. And now we've got a range of things for kids to take because we've worked on it. So are we losing that range of things for kids?
I would say no to that, and I would, I will, I will defer to both our assistant superintendent, superintendent. If you take a look at what has been going through the curriculum education in terms of the different course offerings, I think even in that, we're looking to try to make sure that we're offering courses, whether it be Running Start, Technology, that is adapting to the changing demands of what students require for 21st century education. So I think it's just that adaptation. But from seeing the number of courses that have gone through C and E, if anything, you could argue that we have a very robust offering of electives.
And Jenny, if I can add to that, we have not restricted the elective courses that we offer.
Okay.
So we haven't had to do that yet. Sometimes I have encouraged the high school to consider doing so. I don't think that we need to offer all courses every term. So sometimes, if an elective course is offered, it may, may only be offered one time as opposed to being offered two times, but we haven't even had to restrict those yet.
Okay.
So I think at this point, Mrs. McCann continues to manage all of our sections really well, and we've been able to not decrease the level of courses that kids are able to take.
Okay. It's just taken a long time to get here, so.
And I, I think Mr. Gross's point about that, that dip in enrollment, that really has been the reason that we've been able to make some changes over the last several years. And again, this, this colored sheet that Scott gave you, this highlights it. We had about $600,000 of additional budget requests that we denied. This is low. Usually, it's more like a million. So I just want to share, yes, I continue to cut things that are being asked for, but we have really tried to prioritize meeting our needs, making sure that we have appropriate facilities, services, focusing on our contracts. I appreciated the public comment that was given earlier about the need for our contracts for our teachers and our support staff. We have done all of those things. So I think we're in really good shape here.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Jenny. Go ahead, Nicole.
Yeah, I was actually thinking about this a lot over the last couple of weeks, so I'm glad Scott mentioned the interventionists. We've talked a lot about how we still need remediation to get back on track from COVID, and that our kids aren't all quite where they need to be. And before I was on the board, talking to some of the principals and some of the parents in town, I've heard stories about our interventionists really being tied up with special ed. And so there's a lot of, maybe not a lot, there's a, there's a population of kids that are not quite on grade level, but also not qualifying for special ed, and that's where some of this need for interventionists are coming from. So I'm just a little bit concerned that we've got Glen Lake and Bartlett asking for interventionists without granting those. So I don't know that this is the best audience to answer the question as to what is our plan in lieu of those interventionists, but I didn't know to ask it last time. So I'm bringing up that concern now, just to make sure that we are considering that remediation need. I know we have a ton of budget items, so.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that question, Nicole. I would share, we're not cutting any of these services. We're just not adding additional.
Right.
So we, we have, over the last several years, we've added a number of interventionists at Glen Lake, at Bartlett, Maple Lab. We've had more support services, I think, than we've ever had before. This just didn't give them additional on top of what they already have. But we will continue to watch that carefully, because I do agree, there is unfinished learning still from COVID. We do have kids that have had a dip. I think most of our kids have responded well and continue to, but we know that kids had learning loss for sure.
All right, Jenny, one more question so we can get going on this.
That's always a topic of conversation where the kids, you know, still have catching up to do. Is it worth thinking about, and this is the last thing I ever want to add on, but is it worth, like, thinking of maybe a warrant article for these interventionists? Because, I mean, everyone's talking about public schools and catching up, and would the public be interested in a warrant article where they can choose that, where we do have a need for them? Just a thought I'm throwing out.
I've heard a lot of parents with this frustration, just from my own feedback.
And I'm, I'm never one to add warrant articles, will I know it, but just a thought.
Well, the question, could we use more people in an interventionist-type role? The answer to that is and will always be yes. And every school district, even the best-staffed, highest-achieving school district, would always want more staff to provide more supports for students. So I think with all things Goffstown, this is the balancing act. This is the ability to say, we've focused very rightly on our contracts. We brought, I think, really good, robust contracts to the voters. They were supportive of that. We've put a lot of resources into both of those contracts, for our support staff as well as our teachers. And I think that that's the right focus. Could we use additional interventionists? Yes, we always could. No, no doubt.
All right, are we ready?
Keep going. I'll ask a question at another time while getting more information.
Okay. All right, so we're going to go page by page. If anybody has any questions. Go ahead, Jared.
Teacher sub salaries is currently listed at $300,000.
So we're starting with page one.
Page one, of course.
Yep.
I never start on page two. Looking at our actuals, 2021, we spent $338,000. 2022, $421,000. Actuals for 2023 was $487,000. Our budget is $300,000. That seems to be vastly under what our actuals has been. My recommendation is we should probably increase this, but I'd like to hear administration's thoughts on that before I make a motion.
So Mr. Gross and I talked about this. We recognize that this is a line that is trending in the wrong direction, that we recognize that the $300,000 allocation is not enough, and we purposely did not increase this line. Scott?
I mean, I think it's safe to say that the default number, which, by the way, got a lot worse today, is, is such that, you know, trying to, you know, keep this budget as, as... Wait, passable, yeah. I guess that's the thing. So, you know, I think we do recognize that that's a line that probably is light, but, you know, just hoping that we'll be able to transfer others, see how, see the year goes by. But I'm not going to deny the fact that, that it kind of doesn't make sense in terms of the actuals, but by the same token, last year, we did have more long-term substitutes, things like that, that are in there. But, and hoping that that number will not be as high as that 480-something number, but, but I think that's the recognition of trying to come, go forward with a passable budget. Because if you don't have a passable budget, then you go to, you operate under a default and... Yeah, but, but bad forecasting means that we have to do a lot of line transfers because we did not do our due diligence in forecasting and budgeting. I know that we increased substitute pay. I'm not comfortable keeping this at $300,000 with so much of our actuals being so high. So I would like to make a motion to raise this and add $30,000 under new spending for teacher substitute salaries. And my rationale is to at least try to get to a place where we're matching our actuals.
And my rationale is to at least try to get to a place where we're matching our actuals, even though that's vastly under.
I'll second it.
All right, so I have a motion by Jared, I have a second by Ellen. Is there any discussion or questions?
Can you read, is it going, how much are we adding?
30,000.
30,000 under FY25 new. So the proposed budget would be 330,000. Our default would of course remain at 300,000.
That's reference line 12.
So you're adding an additional 20 over the actual for the.
I'm adding additional 30,000.
No, 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 over the FY23 actual was around 309.
Yep.
Okay. So if we would match the actual, it would be that. The logic for adding the additional 21,000 is, other than inflation, what?
The prior three years were 338,000, 421,000, and 487,000 respectively.
Okay. Let's get the other sheets.
It's line number, uh, reference number 10. Dan.
Sorry, I'm using my projected voice and I realize nobody's here anymore.
That's okay. Dandy, see it?
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. So we're gonna add 30,000 to that line.
To new.
To new, yep. Go ahead, Jared, more on page one?
Yep. Line 14, under the note section, retirement stipends, 187,000. Looking at our actuals, fiscal year '21 was 50,500. Fiscal year 2022, the actual was 12,000. No actuals last year. I know that we're keeping this, um, our budget this year was 115,500 and we've moved it to 187,000. Is there any projected retirements that we're planning on that this encompasses?
Guys.
And if so, how many?
Ask that.
I don't have the exact number from Kate, but we have in our, both of our union contracts, they have to let HR know, the HR director know of their intention to retire at the end of this year, um, and then.
With the ability to rescind it.
With the ability to rescind in April. Um, and so the $187,000 represents both teachers and, uh, support staff that have notified us of their intention to retire. I believe that number is eight to 10 individuals, but I am not, you know, 100% sure of that. I can, I can follow up on that. But these are all of those, those individuals who have given us the intent to retire. As the board knows, uh, technically, these are stipends that would be paid out of the FY25 right after July 1. Sometimes we, actually the last several years, we've gone back to the board and we've paid it using FY24 dollars, or the, or the current year's dollars, but the 187 does represent the known retirements that have been filed as of, uh, the deadlines.
Thank you. No further questions on this.
Thanks, Jared. Anyone else have any questions on page one? All right, so we're gonna move on to page two. So we're gonna move to page three. Go ahead, Jared.
Just as a notation, Scott, the additional 35,000 in line 63, or reference line 63.
Yeah.
I know that you have a whole listing of all the software. Which ones in our note descriptions account for that 35 grand?
Um, the biggest one is, uh, Discovery Education, it's no longer DOE funded, $10,000. Um, and then it's, it's really the first, uh, three out of the first four. The mobile device management, that FileWave one went up quite a bit, I think it was almost 10,000. Office 365, that's what, um, Steve was mentioning before, that one went up quite a bit. Um, and so did the one that was his backup software for servers, Beam, that went up. Um, PandaDoc went up a few thousand dollars, which is, yeah, so those are the, the primary drivers.
And you might not have this, uh, but I'll probably need it later on, wink, wink. Um, for the one that is no longer funded by the Department of Education, how many times has students or anybody used this service?
I don't know. I would have to follow up with, I don't, I wouldn't know the click rate or the.
Just, just, again, wink, wink, probably something we need to have later on.
We'll, we'll get your supplemental on that.
I, I know that other groups that look at this will ask those types of questions of, what's the actual rate of use for these subscriptions?
The Discovery Education one is, um, also used to supplement, um, learning, so it might be used by families, et cetera. But I will tell you that I know that, that, um, that Stephen and, um, Christina Lamson are looking at like the click, the click rates on things like online type subscriptions and they're, they're gathering data on that for that very reason.
Good.
All right, if everybody's good with page three, we'll head to page four.
We might not have said this earlier, but anyone at home who wanted to follow along, all these, these documents are on the website.
Right.
So you'd be able to, um, actually just open the document that says FY25 proposed budget with notes and you can follow along right with us.
Thank you, Brian. All right, we can move on to page five, if everybody's good with four. We can move on to page eight.
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
Would it be appropriate to ask Mr. Gross where the needed change was, um, for that out of district placement?
500,000.
That we're gonna need? I think it's gonna, might be an additional 400 or something.
Yeah, so that would be on page six.
Yeah, we just passed that.
So on page six, reference number 172.
What is school tuition?
And because it's, uh, a special education, uh, provided service, it would go under the default, so that number would need to be 1,813,050, with the notes also changing.
Can you say that number again, Scott?
So it's, it's an additional 400,000.
Okay.
And that's line 71, John.
One, yeah, 172.
72.
So Scott, because that is a default item, um, are you looking for a motion to increase that or that's just?
Yes. Make a motion to increase default as presented.
All right, so a motion by Jared, do I have a second?
Second.
By Caroline, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, so we were on eight, we can go on to nine. I'm sorry, I was, I was looking at something.
I'm just gonna start shouting out. Uh, reference line 249, kind of the same thing, Scott.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at.
New of 32,000, which, which of the note sections kind of encompasses that?
Mostly, uh, the CalTora and Schoology are the ones that are driving that increase. And you'll recall that that was part of ESAR that is no longer available to us. It's one of the few that we saw that ESAR cliff in terms of no, no longer having the, the funds to do.
Good. All right, so let's move on to page 10.
Power School University Training, is that something that we need or can we have subject matter experts do this training for us?
Um, so we do need that. That is, uh, the one lone potential plane ride that I support out of the entire budget every year. So Power School University, our database manager goes to every year. Um, it's, it is typically a plane ride. This is, uh, it, mission critical to make sure that we are up to speed with the database changes and to make sure that we're good with all of our state reporting. So our database manager, Betsy Murdock, is the subject matter expert, but this is her meeting with, um, the Power School gurus from across the country.
And this is only done onsite? They don't do this virtually at all?
Correct.
Thank you, Jared. Anyone else, page 10? So we can move on to page 11.
I know this is gonna be a question that comes up. Uh, reference line 317, FY24 for the school board stipends, why is that so much higher than the other years? Yeah, I, cause I don't think it's changed at all.
Not in years and years.
So you're looking at the actuals or you're, what do you?
Uh, no, I'm, on the budget notes, so I'm just looking, the FY24, it says 26,063 dollars. Prior year it was 21,107 dollars. And if I look on the other actuals, which is further years, I mean, it fluctuates a lot.
So if you'll remember, a year ago or two years ago, the, the line below that, uh, which is.
Is that the Carvo?
Reference, yeah. Reference line 319, that was removed, okay, from the above line, from minute taking. And if you also recall, last year, we had to increase that because the minute taker is now taking minutes for C and E meetings and.
Policy.
Policy meetings, et cetera, so.
But if that was pulled out, then, then how come it's not like we're delu, deleted from those prior lines?
Full, full disclosure on, on this one here, the school board has not, um, increased the school board stipend in, I don't know how long.
Yes.
And I will be presenting something for the board to consider an adjustment to school board stipends. So, because it ha, I don't think it's been done in six to eight years. And in the past, there was like a 3% escalator in there and that has not happened. So, um, I will be coming back to you this, this school board year with, because I believe there is funding in, in that line anyway, to make an adjustment to school board stipends. So that's why I didn't.
But you're not recommending a change in the line?
No, because the, the line that is there right now will allow that to happen. Um, if it's changed, then it won't be allowed to happen. There won't be enough money in it to do it.
I guess, I was just looking at the note taking, cause if I look at the actuals from prior years, it was all over the place. And you're saying that those actuals, because they included Denise's stipend in there?
Yeah, it, I think we're gonna, we're gonna need another year of experience to see where they, they kind of, you know, play out in terms of that reference. Again, on the notes one, it would be reference line 319.
Yeah.
There is, um, in, in line 317, which is stipends, I believe based upon my recommendation to you in, in, in subsequent months, that there will be enough to increase the stipends that have not been increased in god knows how long, uh, to make that happen.
And Scott, at some point in time, we might want to consider, um.
Yeah, like, like a factor of X percentage, it's, it's.
Yes.
It's a lot easier to manage.
And I think, this is a topic that I think is, is unfair for board members.
Yeah.
To, um, be talking about in some ways, because you, you all put a lot of time in. Um, I think the stipends that you receive are very, very, very small, um, compared to all the time that everyone puts in, but Scott, I think we should have just a built-in escalator.
Yeah.
So that we don't go eight years without there ever being an increase.
Yeah, I would agree.
Because the last time we did it, um, I, I want to say, like nine years ago, it was a long time. It's been a long time.
Yeah.
And when we did it nine years ago, it hadn't been done in.
Since the beginning.
I mean, since the dawn of time, you know, so it.
And recognizing that it's also the treasurer, all the people that do, you know, whether it be the moderator, the treasurer, that, you know, like those are very important roles and we, we don't often revisit what those, you know, stipends are to those folks who do all those jobs.
Jared, did you have?
No, I'm just, I'm kinda, thank you for mentioning that. So Jim's stipend's also in here.
Yeah.
And so it's not just school board stipends, it's elected officials' stipends.
Yeah, you have, those are on a separate line. Um, hold on.
Treasurers on.
Treasurers on a different, should be on the page.
2313.
If it's later on, that's fine, but Jim, Jim's, or the, the moderator of the deliberative session?
Right. I, what I'm trying to say is I think all of these elected officials have to, we have to take a look at what these stipends are, um, and then put that, fix it and then put the escalator in.
No, I understand that, but the moderate, so, reference line 317, is that just a school board stipend?
Yes.
Or does that include the facilitator of the deliberative session, the treasurer? Or does that include the facilitator of the deliberative session, the treasurer, all those pieces?
No, the treasurer is on page 13. Hold on, she's, I'm sorry, 12. Reference line 347. And the other folks, the moderator and the clerk are on line 362.
They're later on, okay.
So what's on line 319?
That, that's Denise's money for all the hours she goes on the minute taking.
All the minutes.
Which is not enough.
So many meetings now.
She puts up with this, I don't think so.
Yeah, she does a lot of them.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to 12.
So I noticed the treasurer is going up.
Yes, yeah. Can I like move on to page 13?
So a couple of things I wanna, on this page, I want to keep you posted on. Line 375, which is election, it's called AccuVote maintenance agreement for elections. I know that the state has approved two vendors to up, you know, to, for the town to purchase new voting machines.
Tabulation machines.
Right, tabulation machines. So I don't know what's gonna come of that, we didn't budget, you know, for any of that. We haven't been part of those discussions with the town. But I wanted to put it on your radar that we could be looking at, we typically assist with the town in terms of the cost of elections, so.
But you haven't been asked yet?
Not been asked yet, but if, if, it could be in next year's budget, it could be one where I just get surprised, and by the way, I, we need, I doubt we'll do that, but those machines, I think, are going to get replaced at some point. Tabulators.
Go ahead, Dan, thank you.
So the tabulation machines that are currently being used, the AccuVotes are very old, hard-to-find parts. Of the four elections that are presumably going to occur in 2024, the two elections, the three elections that'll occur in this particular budget are, two are non-school-related, one would be school-related. So technically, we're responsible for one out of, if you want to think about it, four, because on town voting day, there are two elections, there's a school election, there's a town election. Then we have a primary, and then we have a general election. So 25% of the cost could legitimately be owned by the school. We should, we should have our own 25%. The difference between, we don't know what the difference is gonna be tween vers, when we have to program the AccuVote card, memory card, versus the new technology, what it's gonna cost to program the new technology. And that's up in the air, we don't know. But if we're gonna think about procuring new equipment, I don't even have an estimate of cost.
Yeah, we don't, and we don't, we're not even sure if the state's gonna kick in to help with that with town, so.
Unlikely.
I just, I just wanted you to-
Scott, at this point, the towns, the town has not finished their budget.
Right, so I haven't heard anything, I just-
We don't know if they might be adding-
Yeah, so we were just on that particular page, and I just wanted you to know that that's one, you're gonna see this one coming, probably next year. Hopefully, they won't, it won't be this year, if they make any changes. It's there on a different fiscal year, you guys, you're aware of that, so.
Alright, so we can move on to page 14.
So on page 14, I want to bring to the board's attention, line number 380, SAU Management Services. So one of the unique challenges of doing the budget is that the SAU Board does not recently met, and there is, an action was taken at that meeting, I was notified by Kate in that respect. So the new amount in the default will now be $2,130,028. And that's based upon the SAU Board's actions last week.
So no motion required, Scott?
We should, I think, I think it's important, anytime we make a change, that should be a motion. So it would be to authorize the business administrator to change the default number for FY '25 to $2,130,028.
So moved.
Alright, a motion by Ellen, do I have a second?
Second.
By Caroline, any further discussion? See and none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
So that becomes the proposed?
No, yes, yes.
Confusing.
Sorry.
Any other questions on 14?
District, district salaries at 65,000?
What number?
I'm sorry, right underneath it, reference line 381. We don't have any actuals for this, so could we just have an understanding of what this money's for? Is this pulled out from another line?
No. 24, I have, I have to look at the salary sheets to see who's, who that potentially is.
Because I'm, I'm just looking at the other page, which is reference line-
Oh, I know what this is, this is our ad-
Yeah, it's a salary pool.
No, it's not. This is the, as you know, we created a position for Admin Assistant Supervisor, that's what, so again, we repurposed the, one of the positions for the admin assistants and, in terms of the FTEs, and that's what that, that's what that one is.
So that's a move.
That's a move, yeah.
Scott, can we make, maybe put a note in there?
Put a note, yeah, yep. I'll just put Admin Assistant Supervisor.
As this is no longer a CBA role, they would get any pay bump through the salary pool.
Correct.
Yes.
So just like our IT staff and, yeah, exactly.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Jared, gonna move on to page 15.
If, if we can, just like, wanna go back to 14 for a moment. Reference line 385, which is new spending of $3,417 over default. What's our total for the administrative services salaries? And like, what percentage is this proposed amount of that?
So those salaries are broken out by the building? In this particular district line, that's just the, that's just the increase, right?
But, so this is a salary pool, so over total compensation for this year, is this like a 5% raise, a 2% raise? Like, what is this number representative of?
I'll check with Kate on that one, but I think it was five, four or five, Brian?
I can't remember which.
I don't, I'd have to take a look.
So the, so, general understanding, reference line 385, the administrative services salary pool, which is the amount of money that we can give people for raises-
Right.
Is roughly 5% of our total salaries we have for this group.
It's 4 to 5 percent, I just don't know if it's four or five.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, so back to page 15, if anybody has any questions, comments? Yep, go ahead, Jared.
No, I'm saying thumbs up, I'm good.
Oh, okay. Alright, so page 16.
Line 458, property rental, that, that's going up, or we're using more time?
So Ellen's asking a question about line 458. The 1,500, is that, why did that increase?
Based on our lease agreement with New England-
Yes, yeah.
Just went up, okay.
Is that a new contract, or should that be in our default contract? Because it's an existing contract. Or is this a year-to-year lease?
It's, it's, it's year-to-year with, like, options, that's kind of what we're, what we have, so we have to put it in new.
Yeah, okay.
Scott, I'm guessing on line 462, that Jared might want the Primex rate increase amount, if he were to be asked that?
7%. Just got it today, that's why I know that.
Does that number need adjustment, or?
It was, if we're making all these change, I mean, it, it would need an adjustment, it was, but it was 135,000, like, $900, so I was just not gonna, I wasn't gonna do anything with it for $900, so. I, I had projected a 7% increase, and it came in like a little bit more than that, so I was just, I was fine with just leaving it as it is, so.
Pick it up in the subsequent year?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it'll be that bad, but.
Alright, so we can move on to page 17.
Line 469, if I made?
469.
Ground maintenance, is that, or anywhere else in here have anything to do with the new field?
Scott, she asked if there's anything to do with the new field, that increase of $820?
No, this, this is a district line, so this is, the field would be under the high school, and this is just for, you know, for ancillary, like, tree work that we might do, but it's not specific to-
More general.
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot of dead trees in Melbourne.
But yeah, you'll see that at, when we do the, each respective school, their, their lines. This is more or less also taking care of our equipment that we have, that are, like, district equipment, so.
Alright, moving on to page 18.
So looking at line 505?
Yeah.
I know that you're reducing that for obvious reasons, but our actuals, 2021 was $10,000, 2022 was $500, 2023 was $27,589. Should this be dropped a little bit more, you think this is right, Scott? And see where it falls out?
It's so hard to say, because, to give you an example, in our other town in our SAU, we've had like, nothing in there, and then all of a sudden, boom, 25,000. You know, we had $3,300 in there. So it's, it's one where I lowered it a bit, but I don't feel comfortable going lower than that.
Okay.
Because it's one that we could get popped on, so.
And that particular unfunded mandate is a federal one. This is not a state mandate, this is a federal mandate.
You're talking point for point, Brad.
Yep.
Alright, moving on to page 19.
It's just a note, Ms. Chair, that 530, line, reference line 530 concludes the district line, and now we'll be going into a specific school.
Yep, to Bartlett, right. Thank you, Jared. And it's mainly teachers and benefits and stuff.
Yep.
So we can move on to page 20.
Do, do we need to make any adjustments for health insurance, based on the numbers that came out, or have we already incorporated all that?
For GMR.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
Kate is getting back to me on your other question, so.
I, I know that, I know that the rates drastically increased for insurance, do we need to update any lines here, or do they already include that?
No, so Kate takes care of updating all of the salary and, and benefit type lines, and it's already built in.
Great.
Kate said that, that number that you referenced was 3%.
Ah, for the administrators.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're on page 20, continue on with Bartlett.
And on, just as, just as, just as a reminder, when you look at that line 554, this was the part about the laptop lease, where we had to make, you know, an adjustment there. We have, for the most part, kept our copier fees the same, even though we're now in a new contract. So we're paying a little more on the lease, we're paying less on the, on the contract for maintenance on, on the machines.
I would reference line 570 and apologize to the Bartlett parents for the recorders.
It's rite of passage.
It is a rite of passage.
Alright, let's move on to page 21.
So just for clarification, I often get asked, on, this is on reference number 587, there was a Gaga pit that was in the current year's budget, and that is a one-time expense, so it was pulled out of the default. So just, so those, I typically share those periodically as we go through them. Sometimes, you know, we, we add a lot to the default, but you also have to take out your one-time expenditures.
Go ahead, Jenny.
I have a, just a question. I know we had added a teacher health PE at Bartlett. I remember okaying it in our proceedings. What are we doing now that I see that that's not in next year's budget?
Help me out, Wendy, are we talking about the phys ed teacher?
Yep.
That, that's in next year's budget.
It is, okay.
Yeah, it's-
Jim's looking at the request that Mrs. Logan had made for an additional-
We didn't.
If she'll cut in what we already have.
Gotcha, so that was on, I think, on this, this sheet, the colored sheet that Scott indicated. So they had been asking to increase the phys ed, we did not support that.
Okay, but her position is there, just not increased?
Yes, so she just didn't get an increase.
The increase in time, okay, okay.
So they still have the same level of ser- service that they currently have.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you. Reference line 576, the Bartlett books and printed material. I'm just looking at historical numbers, $4,043 in actuals for '21. Actuals for '22 was $3,298. Actuals for '23 were $2,533. Our budget has more than doubled our recent actuals. I know that you have the reference notes down here, are we going to actually do this?
Now, that's what was requested by the building principal, was the reason why- Now, that's what was requested by the building principal was, um, the reason why it is level funded in that respect. Is it, it's not supported by the prior years, but in terms of the four, the, um, the reading program as well as the classroom library, so that's, that is what they're looking to do. I generally, um, am cautious about cutting books.
Oh, I, I agree with you. Don't get me wrong. I just.
Except when the actuals, you know, kind of show that maybe you should. But in this particular case, they did provide specificity in terms of what they were looking to do, so that's why I didn't touch it.
This might be philosophical and, and I don't go one way or the other. I just ask the question. Knowing that we haven't spent actual money on material, wouldn't the default be lower and then adding these be listed as new items? I, I guess I have a hard time understanding.
Statutorily.
Not set, so.
And I think the other thing with respect to the Bartlett library, so during the COVID years, we likely did buy less books. And we made some of those choices because we knew we were spending more on.
Technology.
Databases, technology, IT subscriptions, et cetera. So, um, I, I think it's good to note and if she's spending, if, if that school's not spending their budget allocation, the budget allocation should be adjusted down. I always support that. This may be one year that we kind of give them a little bit of a wait and see, uh, and then maybe adjust them next year. But I do know that during kind of the COVID years, although that wouldn't really explain last year, but we would expect, um, our library purchases to be increasing.
All right, so we did 21. We can move on to 22.
I mean, you can just see page by page, there's very, very little new spending. So this is reflective of the presentations that you saw last week, that there's just not a lot of new spending in the budget.
Bless you. All right, we can move on to page 23. We can move on to page 24. This is still Bartlett.
EpiPins are though, uh, EpiPins, Scott? The district has them for safety reasons.
We do. We purchase child and adult.
Okay, and we have them at all our schools?
Yes.
Okay.
And they only last, I want to say, two years, um, so we have to, we're constantly replacing them.
And children who are required to have them.
Have their own.
Have their own.
They do.
Okay.
Yep.
And then this is, um, the next line, 685 is the replacement of the AED, which was during our presentation as well.
Yeah, and a lot of those AEDs, uh, were all purchased with grant money back, back in the day and they've all kind of lived out their, their lives.
We're still on 24. But we can move to 25. You have a question on 25?
706. I know it's not a huge amount of money, but it, um, general supply speech.
Yeah, so that would be, um, consumables that our speech and language department would use. And I think that that's just reflective of, you know, everything's costing a little bit more. So that line increased from 150 to 500.
All right, we can move on to page 26.
Can I just ask a question?
Oh, sorry, Jenny, go ahead.
I had talked about how costly the, um, lists were for, um, supplies for kids this year. I'm wondering if we can add a little money to the general supplies lines for any of the schools. Like, I know we don't have any money to add, but is that anything that we can do at all for, for some of the schools? Just so that we have boxes of crayons at the elementary schools or something?
For any increases in the, um, 611, right, Scott?
I mean, they were nominal. Nominal because, again, I'm trying to.
I know, we're.
Trying to deal with reality in terms of, you know, where we are, so we're trying to stay level funded. And in some cases, decrease certain things if, just based upon the nature of things. So I, I don't, I don't think there's a need to increase our general supply lines. I don't. And if there was, you know, I would just go back to the principal and say, hey, maybe we take it out of another line. If you were, if you needed another thousand dollars. It's not something that is ever an issue as far as I'm concerned.
And we've never denied those requests. So there have been no requests for schools that needed consumables, supplies, markers, crayons, paper, et cetera, that we've said, no, you can't have that. So we would always work with the schools to make sure they have the materials they need.
Thanks, Jenny. Go ahead, Jared.
Um, just looking here, teacher retirement.
What number?
I'm, yeah, trying to find it.
Oh, okay.
I have it on the non-note pages, uh, line 528. It, it's a general question. I'm not necessarily interested in the number. But what is this? Because we have a teacher retirement in the district lines. Why is this carved out from that?
So that, that's. That's the cost that we pay for the employees into the state retirement system.
Thank you.
The piece that we saw in the district lines, those were contractually obligated stipends upon retirement. This is what we actually pay for each teacher, each, um, et cetera.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to page 27.
Looking at reference line 769, I'm sorry, yeah, 768, 769, voice communications. Are we laying down additional fiber?
No, it's just reflective of the fact that everything, it is the furthest school from this high school. So it costs more, um, for the, for that service. So again, going to Maple Avenue, because it's in close proximity, it's all based upon the distance between the high school and the building that is, that gets it. And that's why it has, um, a higher cost than most others.
Has the rate gone up? Because 2021 actuals was $4,355. 2022 actuals was $4,562. 2023 actuals was $4,148. And our default in budget is almost double our actuals.
Yeah, I'll check with Steve on that one. Line 768.
Just another situation where our actuals are less than our budget and I'm just not sure why.
Yeah, and, uh, again, in, if we see multi-year patterns of lines not being spent, those are lines that we typically reduce. So I, I would, I think we should make sure that sometimes there might be other things, but why don't we check that line and we'll get back to you on that.
Uh, this is line, reference line 768 on the notes packet.
Page 27.
Page 27.
All right, moving on to page 28.
Line 802, that's a big reduction.
802, Scott.
I think that was just looking at actuals, um.
It came down.
I think the actuals justified it, so hold on.
But these would be, maintenance lines would be likely another example, though, much like the substitute line that we purposely underfunded. We did not increase a lot of the maintenance lines. Knowing that everything is costing more.
Yeah, it was, it was based upon actuals, so.
All right, moving on to page 29.
Uh, just. I'm good.
You're good? All right, moving on to page 30. And at 865, next 866 starts Maple Avenue. So top part is Bartlett finishing up and then we start on Maple.
Just as a question, reference line 854. Do we have to have a dollar in there to do repairs on Bartlett to keep that line open?
No. We don't. As long as there's a dollar in, in any function line.
Okay.
Which is in the 2600 series, we could transfer in.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's move on to page 31. We can move on to page 32.
Just looking ahead, reference line 910, I know that this $47,000 is for the curriculum. This is, is this going to be a one-time spend or is this going to be a recurring spend year to year?
It'll be reoccurring, but not every year. It's more like every five years.
And then it'll, it'll be in.
Yeah, so these ones are tricky for us to track and to monitor. I've asked Wendy to start to have kind of a better plan of how we can sequence some of these larger curriculum purchases. But usually it won't be in every year. It's like every fourth year, every fifth or sixth year that we'll have some of these larger purchases. But we want to be more strategic about planning them out better.
But you're saying every five years, like for the reading program?
Yeah.
But next year could be science and then next year could, would be social studies or math. So there would be something in, in a, in a.
Yeah, so we, we try to stagger them so that you don't have three or four of them in one year.
Right, right, but I just want to be clear that.
Yep.
You're talking about maybe five years from now, we'll see a reading curriculum coming back in.
Right.
Thanks, Ellen. All right, moving on to page 33.
Did we change it so that we have those on a cycle now? That are replaced with books on a cycle so that they can be added to the? Because I know we had talked about this before, about having that happen so that our, um, if our, if we cycled things through and we actually had a purchase every year of that, it could be added to the default?
You could adopt a model that you would do it that way, yes. We're kind of not quite ready. We're talking about how to have, instead of having the, the reading, um, purchase every five years or every six years, that we could have something that's a little more reliable, kind of year to year. So that is something I think we're striving to work towards.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. One of the things that I've noticed in looking at different curriculum materials is that when you're looking at contracts, most of them, it is more advantageous financially when you're looking at those five and six-year contracts. So it's trying to figure out, how do we get ourselves off-cycle but not make it so that it's so expensive when we're trying to make those moves? And I think that our administrators and obviously I'm working with our vendors to try to make it so that, you know, we're using salesmanship to get better pricing for things. So it is my goal to get us so that we don't have everything up at once. But often those six-year deals are the most financially beneficial for the district.
And the cost for new curriculum, not, it's not new curriculum, new books for a, like, I would think science could potentially be more than a reading program.
Honestly, it depends on what programs you're looking at and how much of it is digital.
They're all expensive.
Yes. Everything is expensive.
And we have, um, over the years, we have used kind of one-time money a lot of times to do these programs. So when we bring in the last two reading programs that we've done, th- these are massive purchases. You're talking 400-plus thousand dollars. And we have not budgeted for them. We've been very creative about using other funds. But the idea of adopting a set systematic, consistent, reliable increase is, I think, kind of what we're trying to move more towards.
And if we could have it that way so that we could use it in a default every year, it would like limit our budget a lot, that we have to really worry about every year.
Kind of the volatility of one year it's up and the next year it's down, it's up, it's down. I, I would rather see a steady, consistent trajectory.
All right, if everybody's set, run page 32. We can move to 33. All right, we can move to page 34. We're on page 34, Jared. All right, if everybody's good, we can go to page 35.
Scott, can you check the note on line nine-nine-nine? Just, it says that there's a price increase, but there's no increase. Maybe that's an old note.
Yep, okay.
It's an old note.
All right, moving on to page thirty-six. Moving on to page thirty-seven. It's more Maple Avenue, teachers' salaries, benefits.
Ten, line ten fifty-eight?
Ten fifty-eight, okay.
What, do we cut paras in half, or what happened?
I can't hear over here.
I'm sorry.
She's questioning the paraprofessional.
Can you give me the line number?
Ten fifty-eight.
Ten fifty-eight.
So that's a part-time, that's a position in the library, so that's in addition to the library media specialist.
Yeah.
So that's one position in the library.
Yep.
In twenty-three, it was over forty thousand. How'd it come down?
Different person, perhaps, I don't know, because again, those, HR loads those based upon who we have in the position right now and the hours that they have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
I'll try and yield.
All right, moving on to page thirty-eight.
Do we have two assistant principals at Maple now?
We do. I think technically we have one assistant principal and one dean of students, but we have the additional administrator that we added.
All right, moving on to page thirty-nine.
Looking at line eleven-twenty-three, I know that these are dues and fees, just because we have principal, assistant principal. Do we need to double-count that fee for the dean of students?
What do you think, Mr. Gross?
No, they didn't ask for it. Well, let me rephrase. Is this a certification that is needed for somebody to excel at their position?
I would say that these dues largely, they give you, I mean Wendy can also speak to it, she's, you know, recent principal, but they give you opportunities for professional development, networking.
Newsletters.
Newsletters, and those things can be shared with, you know, your dean of students. I think it certainly can ask next to, but it wasn't like it was included. I specifically asked, on all of these dues, can you please make sure that these are accurate? And that, and I didn't get any response in terms of a need for that.
Gonna ask a question then, if they could be shared, why would we pay for one for the principal and then one for the assistant principal if they could be shared? Potentially have the same things. The reason why I bring this up is I know that this has always been a hot topic for some members.
Yeah.
And that other group. And some of them say we shouldn't be paying for any of this. I disagree with that. I think that this is professional development. This is part of their job.
So I can respond a bit to that, and Wendy, please chime in. But I am no longer a member of, say, New Hampshire School Administrators Association. So I focused on NASCO. That means that if I want to go to any type of, I would have to pay the à la carte price. So I could get information forwarded to me from Wendy and Brian, because they are members, but there are, there's a lot of things that I cannot go to, or if I did, I would pay a large premium to attend that type of conference or that training seminar.
No, I get it. It's just, so this dues and fees would be specifically for Ms. Johnson, and the other individual would not have the ability to attend those events.
Unless, unless we paid, you know, the, for lack of a better term, the à la carte price to go to it.
Right.
Isn't that a chance?
Right, non-member fee.
We likely would, but remember, if you're talking about two people attending the same conference, we typically wouldn't do that. We would say, one person attends the conference, come back and share the information. I wouldn't want multiple administrators out of the building.
So Jared, just to add context, like last week I went to, this is a principal's conference, and as a member, my fee was like two-fifty, for non-members it was like four-fifty.
Oh, gotcha. I didn't know, because we have two designated assistant principals, if they should both have that kind of ability to do that.
Yeah. So I mean, if they had asked for it, I would say yes, but if they didn't ask for it, then there might be something that we should ask them about, because it might be beneficial.
Yeah, because the person might not have known that they want to do it, and it's limiting their progression.
Right.
Or their growth, so that's why I bring it up. Thank you, Shane.
Yeah, of course.
Thanks, Jared.
Question?
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Alan.
Um, line eleven-twenty-seven, the district pays for destination imagination?
The registration dues for.
Did I see that at Bartlett?
For what?
Destination imagination, did, I'm not sure if I saw that at Bartlett.
I don't know if they have it there.
Oh, okay.
Not every school has it.
So moving on to page forty. All right, we can move on to page forty-one, Maple Avenue Building Repairs. Equipment. All right, moving on to page forty-two, we finish out Maple.
Just out of curiosity, what's a storage box rental?
What number is that?
Storage box rental, eleven-seventy-seven.
It's a storage trailer?
Yeah, it's kind of, think about it like a shed, kind of used for storage.
It's like a storage container.
No, on the side of the gym.
So we store a lot of gym equipment there.
Oh, okay.
There's other things in there, but a lot of it's gym-related equipment. We don't have a ton of storage in, at Maple.
In the gym itself, we have almost no storage. There's, there's one on the left-hand side of the kitchen, there's a little kind of closet in there, but not enough for equipment for a school of that size.
All right, so moving on to page forty-two, we finish up with Maple. We start with Glenlake.
So we're just about halfway. After this.
Yep.
All right, moving on to page forty-three. Moving on to page forty-four. Moving on to page forty-five.
Line twelve-eighty-three, good old postage. What are we still sending through the mail?
You're more than happy to actually call her and ask, I mean, no. I, I still think that as much as you want to send things electronically, some of this, like special ed and some other things, preschool is going to require you to send it out via the mail. There's certain special education laws which, I don't have it on my, I have to find it, but I've been working, it's funny that you mention that, because I was working with Lisa Johnson at Maple, and she was quick to give me the RSA, and it says that it has to be by US mail.
That's cool, because I'm looking at actuals and we only spent a hundred bucks for twenty-twenty-three. So I don't know if this is just a wind down of COVID, students are going back in, they are able to.
It's hard.
Yeah, we're certainly using less and less standard US mail, no question about it.
Yeah. But now, that also has gone up to sixty-something cents, so.
And I did see it on the, the Maple, one of the Maple lines, but I know for like, for special ed, they have to send stuff certified sometimes, things like that, so. Yeah, yeah.
All right, we can move on to page forty-six. All right, moving on to page forty-seven. Well, we're gonna finish up at least with Glenlake, and then we can discuss where we want to go. All right, we can move on to page forty-eight. Move to page forty-nine.
What's the breakdown of the assistant principals between Glenlake and Bartlett? Is it two to three?
Point six and point four.
Point six at Glenlake?
Yep, so Glenlake is three days a week.
Thank you.
That was one of the asks, was to make those positions full-time in both schools.
Line fourteen-eleven dues and fees again, for two people, two thousand dollars.
Yeah, this one's a little different, because this includes the NIAC accreditation, which is the, I think I have this National Association of Elementary of Young Children, so this is the preschool accreditation that we carry, so that's the extra cost at that school. So kind of like at Mountain View and at the high school, we have niask. This is kind of like the niask of little kids.
All right, moving on to page fifty. All right, we can move on to page fifty-one.
Ms. Trigg?
Yeah.
Not to go backwards to fifty. Philosophical question debate. If we look at line fourteen-forty-six, glass replacement, this is listed under our budget for repairs. Philosophically, should that potentially come from CRF? Because this is existing.
Yeah, this is like a broken, like broken windows.
I understand that, okay, so.
It's, it's not, like, these are five hundred dollars a year.
These are emergency repairs.
Replacing the windows, replacing it because it's a broken.
It's like a broken plate, like, something like that.
Okay, no, that makes sense, thank you.
Or certainly not a whole series of windows. This would just be if something gets broken.
All right, if we move on to page fifty-two, the top two is finishing up Glenlake, and then we start with the middle school. So we still have to do some staffing. We don't have non-public tonight, correct?
I have two questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Have we, I don't recall, we may have received it, Ginny would know. Comparative data on student achievement for reading and math, pre and post-COVID. We were talking about the needs for mediation and all. Do we have that data that shows if our kids have caught up, or what more? When we were talking about interventionists and that, I'm wondering what the data shows with regard to where our kids are.
So Alan, the most recent data has not come out from the state yet. They anticipate that it will go.
that it will go public in the next three weeks. At an upcoming CNE meeting, all the schools will be doing a presentation on data.
Okay. And do we also look at, like, the NWEAs, or, or just looking at the state?
Oh, we, we look.
We look at.
Everything.
Yeah, we also have unit benchmark assessments as part of our, our different curriculum.
I'm just thinking about it, because we're going through budget.
Yeah.
We're talking about interventionists, and I'd hate to see it come up too late that we have, that kids are still way behind. So I just wanted to ask that. The other thing, and I do not know the current status of it, would we be interested, as a school district, in person, purchasing that lot on the corner of Maple Avenue?
Well.
It's not, it's, it's underdeveloped, it's not for sale.
We've, we've looked at a number of lots right around adjacent to Maple Ave, so the house on the corner was for sale a couple of years ago. And then if you go down Maple Ave, the duplex just past the driveway, we've also kind of kept an eye on that. My understanding of the lot you're talking about has already been, Scott, isn't that approved by the planning board for townhouses?
Right, so it, it, it has considerable worth based upon the fact that it has an approvable plan.
Yeah.
Because I know, I know who owns it.
There's a, there's an approved plan to build townhouses on that property.
That one right on the corner?
The one right on the corner. Scott, do you recall how many? Wasn't it like four or five?
It's a lot. Six?
Anybody would have to be crazy to buy a house there.
All right, so going back to the, to the budget, is there any other questions on page fifty-two with Glenlake?
I just had a quick follow-up question to Wendy. When you're going to do those presentations to CNE, can you just let us know when that's going to be?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so my question to the board is, do we stop with the budget and come back Wednesday night, because we still do have staffing? We have two more schools to go through.
NCIP.
NCIP. And it's twenty to nine.
I think this is a logical break, where we've done all the elementary schools, then we can focus on the middle school and high school.
On the Wednesday? Okay.
I agree. I think that's what we did last year, too. I think we stopped at the elementarys then.
Yeah, we've always done that. All right, so make sure you bring all your budget stuff back Wednesday night. All right, so moving on with the agenda, we have staffing sheets.
So for staffing this evening, we have a number of notifications of leaves of absence, as well as long-term substitute. And here you'll see the list of all the student observers from St. Anselm College, and thanks to Mrs. Gogan for her continued support of that program. For your approval, we have a number of co-curricular non-sports nominations, one, two, three, four, five, five of them. And these are all from Maple Ave. So I would just point out before you approve these, these are good examples of the different co-curriculars that we've been offering for years, and we now have stipends for our teachers. So it took us a long time to get there, but we, we have, for the most part, gotten there, and this is a good reflection of that.
All right, so on the.
These are not new positions, but these are positions that now have stipends.
So I'll move to proof, the, to, we're looking at the.
Co-curricular, non-sports.
Non-sport nominations.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Nicole, any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, is there other business that may legally come before the meeting?
We need to go into non-public with regard to the public comments.
In fact, you can't.
Okay.
So if, I don't know if everybody can hear, Ellen questioned if there was a need to go into non-public regarding the public comment that we received earlier. That, if that, the public, if you're referring to the public comment that was regarding a board member, we would not be able to talk about a board member in non-public.
Okay. Because I don't know if the claims are true or not. I know nothing about it. And if there's something that we needed to do, do we need to discuss? I don't know.
Well, the first thing, I think we would take a look at the petition that was handed to Mrs. Trapez, so I'd, I'd like to get a copy of that and to consider what that looks like. And then I think we would discuss whether that's going to be an agenda item at a subsequent meeting.
And that would have to be in public.
That would have to be in public.
I did not know that. Okay.
Yep.
I just didn't want to just let it lay.
Yep.
Thank you. Oh, Greta, is that your hand?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to acknowledge Jared's work on staying on top of the budget and all the questions that he's asking. I'm, I anticipate that this puts us in a good position when, when he starts attending the board, I mean, the budget committee meetings, and also to acknowledge the amount of time and energy it takes, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, Jared.
I'm just getting to the questions before anybody else did, so.
But you know what's going to be asked, Jared.
I, I know that we are all asking the same questions, I'm just getting there first, so.
Thank you, Lo. We appreciate all your hard work. All right, so we do not have non-public tonight, so Wednesday, six o'clock here, and we'll just finish up budget NCIP.
And unfortunately, we'll be in the theater again. We've got PSAT testing happening all week, so.
Yeah.
I apologize. I know it's hard to hear, it's hard to see. I, I see Mrs. Moore and barely down there. So this is hard for everybody, so we apologize, but this is probably the, the best that we can do.
So I need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait.
Before we do that, Ryan, I, I wanted to say that it is not that hard to actually see. It's to see others, yes, but the lighting in this room is amazing.
It's so much better.
Comparative, and so much, and Wendy, you can probably tell us how your seat was.
All right, a motion to adjourn.
So maybe.
By Ellen, do I have a second?
Second.
By Caroline, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
See you Wednesday.